Are you good, Jess?
Yep.
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Village of Buchanan, June 7th, 2022, Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, I should have the speaker close to me, eh?
Yes.
Sorry. All right. And just bear with me this evening if I appear to be a little off. I have a case of vertigo, so we'll get through this meeting. Okay, first is approved minutes of April 26, 2022. It was a workshop meeting. Any comments, questions? Nothing? Okay. On a motion to approve those meetings?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26 workshop meeting as read.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also for the May 3rd, 2022 Board Meeting. Any comments, corrections?
Just on the top, the attendees, it was the previous board that was listed on there.
Oh, for the May meeting?
For the May 3rd. I think it was just a typo.
All right. Thank you.
I did read it.
Okay. And on a motion to approve that, those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the May 3rd meeting minutes as amended.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? No? Okay. I have a few presentations. The first presentation is for, if I could have Kaylee Reiki come up to the room, front of the room? So Kaylee, thank you for coming tonight. Kaylee is a Buchanan resident, and she lives down by our Highway Department and very close to our skating rink, our new skating rink. And Kaylee was the first person on our new skating rink. So, and she's probably one of the, a big user of the skating rink. I saw her there all the time. So I asked her to come in tonight because I have something for her. So, presented to Kaylee, first on the ice, the little ice skates, New Buchanan Ice Skating Rink, February 18th, 2022. Thank you. And November, we'll be back in business again, so keep those, keep those gates sharpened. The next presentation, there's four, and I, I thought it was very important that I did this. I became mayor in 2014, and I was fortunate to have a good board. We went through many challenges together. And on the board already was Dwayne Jackson, who came in in 2012. And we also had Cheech Pasquale, came in in 2014. And yeah, Cheech, they're still wondering if we're related. We are not. We are not. I wish you were. I wish you were family, but... And then on the board since 2010 was Rich Funchen and Nick Zachary. So as a board, we faced many challenges together. And the first one that comes to mind, this one's kind of a fun one, was, I think it was 2015, 16, the pipeline was coming through. Everybody was fighting the pipeline, fighting the pipeline. They didn't want it coming through. And we finally got to a point where they were going to do eminent domain. And the property we're talking about is just a little strip of property behind Village Hall, in that wooded area behind the field. And they came up with us to an offer. We were going to fight it, and it was $68,000. And we said, oh, heck no. No, 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 no. And I'm telling you, it's a little strip of property. Nope, 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 no good, no good. So we went back and forth negotiating, back and forth, back and forth with the pipeline company. And I think I managed to get it up to about $600,000. So I went back to the board and I said, well, what do you think, guys? It's $600,000. I went back to the board, nah, ask them for more. So I'm like, oh my God, I gotta go back to them again? So I did. And I said, what, what should I ask? And it was $725,000 approximately. And that's what we got. We ended up for a piece of property, it was supposed to be $68,000, that was the value of it, and we ended up getting $725,000. And with that money, we did a lot of good things. We finally got the bucket truck that, you know, for years, for years, the village tried to get a bucket truck. So we went out and bought a brand-new bucket truck, did a lot of work on, on the Village Hall here. So we did a lot of good things. But I always chuckle when I think about that negotiation, how it was from $68,000 to $725,000. So that was like one of the high points. In 2017, the fateful day, January 2017, the announcement of the closure of Entergy. That, that was, that was probably the most difficult time we had to face. And, and I've said it before, nobody prepares you for this. We thought that 2030 sometime, that would be when the plant would, would close unless the technology was upgraded. So here we are, suddenly facing, facing this. And like I said, there's no education on this, there's no, the ABCs of a closure of an, of a power plant. There's, there's nothing. So we ended up, I remember educating ourselves on that. We went to a lot of meetings. It seems like that's all we were doing, were meetings. And I remember the one thing, a couple of days after, the announcement was made on Monday, we had an emergency meeting here at Village Hall on that Thursday, and the residents came out and it, it was, we really didn't have a lot of information, but I remember us saying, look, all options are on the table, and we're going to survive. We are going into a survival mode. So over the next years, that's exactly where we were. We were in survival mode. We looked at all the options because we wanted to keep our beautiful little village. And one thing I didn't want, I just, I couldn't see myself doing it. I'm a fourth generation here. I could not see myself being the last person out of the Village Hall. So we fought, and we fought. We fought with the state. They, they were fun to deal with. Entergy, I, I can't say enough good about Entergy. They were wonderful to deal with. Even the last years, we, we renewed, renegotiated for the final year and got 100, another $135,000. So last year, Unit 3 closed, and Entergy was out of the area at that point. They turned, and I want to say something about Unit 3. You know, they say that that plant wasn't safe. Unit 3 was the longest-running nuclear power plant in the world, in the world. So that plant set a world record. So in between discussing, you know, getting to know Holtech, talking to them, oh my gosh, I just, the meetings, I, I just can't, I can't tell you how many meetings. And there was $7 million. And this, this is a funny story. There was $7 million that Entergy agreed on in the closure agreement, that they would use, that it was for community and environmental. So we were, we were on board with that. We were going to get that money. We were going all out to get that money because we had a plan for the sewer treatment plant. That sewer treatment plant is our future, is our economic future. So it was looking good. We were doing well with it. We were fighting, we were trying to fight off Riverkeeper. And we were, we were concerned that we weren't going to get the money. And so what we were going to do is we were going to have a protest. We were going to protest in front of Entergy. We were going to get the school kids, we were going to get everybody in the community. We're all going to wear T-shirts. And Rich Funchen came up with the logo, People Before Fish. So we were ready to do that. We were on board. But it, it worked out, and we were going to get the money for our sewer treatment plant. And that's when Entergy was still involved. The governor announced, we're going to get the money. And then once the state took control of the money, then they had their own little, little caveats that they wanted to include. And one of those is that the town of Cortland could join in. So that's, that's still in the works, but that's kind of what happened there. We did a lot of grants. We did a lot of grants for the pavilion, so we did a lot of upgrades. I don't know if you guys have seen the upgrades over there yet. The new lighting, beautiful, absolutely beautiful, the sidewalk. But just, just going into a survival mode, that was, that was really hard. It was, it wasn't business as usual here in the village. And I, I really commend, you know, the team I had. You guys were, were really good. You were great to work with. Lot of challenges, and, and I think one of the things that affected me the most was when our, our previous building inspector came to me and said, Teresa, they're really counting on you. They're really counting on you, Teresa. They, they don't want to lose the village. And at the time, people were thinking that we had an option to bring in a gas-fired plant. That was not an option. So we, we worked through a lot of things. We started planning for the future. And I know Nick Zachary was a proponent of the overlay district on 9A and the Circle area, which is going to come to fruition pretty soon. There's a developer that is interested next to the hardware store. So, you know, we're going to be working on that. So the previous board, the board I'm talking about, is the board that really helped the village survive. We got through the worst of the worst. And the next board will be planning, really planning, working on the future, really being the board, I guess, I guess the best way to say is to reinventing the village. So there are a lot of different options for development here. I know we, we decided to rezone over at Indian Point, the Indian Point property, even though it's not all available yet, but we needed to start planning for the future. So in 2024, my understanding is they're still interested in releasing that property. So once we get the zoning in place there, that will, that will help with, you know, what's going to happen with that property. But yeah, I mean, we, we really, we really had a tough time. It was the most historical, two historical things that happened here in the village. Number one, Con Edison coming here and opening up one of the first commercial nuclear power plants in the country. So that kind of put us on the map. You know, it's, there weren't many communities, small communities, that had nuclear power plants. The other historical thing, I look at before Con Ed, and then I look post Indian, Indian Point, Entergy. So, you know, when Con Ed came in, I'll just tell you really quickly, we basically got our infrastructure here in the village. That's when the Village of Buchanan had their own sewer treatment plant. And you can see some of our surrounding communities do now have sewer. They have septic. So it really catapulted our community. It made us, it, it's, it put us ahead and beyond, beyond other people in the community. We had all the services, we still do. We had all the services, and everybody wanted to live here in the village. But one of the things, when the announcement was made, I was really concerned. I know there were some places like Zion, Illinois, who are still severely suffering. What happened, these communities, the houses, people just walked away from their houses. They just walked away. And we didn't have that here. We had, once a house was sold or somebody wanted to leave, the turnover, very quick, very quick, very quick. So thank God, we didn't have to deal with vacant houses and things like that. So we were fortunate. So I just, I just thought that it was important to, to recognize you guys. Because I'm, I just, because, because of the team, the village survived. And one thing I forgot to mention, which, and I have to thank Stephanie, our attorney, Marcus, the legislation, like, we decided we were going to think out of the box. How do you survive? You can't keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. So the legislation that was passed that allowed us to tax the spent fuel cask, and that was like unheard of. Like, you can't do that. You can't, well, you don't know unless you try. And just, I, I know we worked with Sandy Galiff, and back and forth, back and forth, and then Stephanie, you know how patient Stephanie is, she finally said, that's it. I'm writing this legislation. We're like, you go, Stephanie. So Stephanie actually wrote this legislation. And it passed. It passed in the Senate, passed in the Assembly. And it was like, okay, now we just have one hurdle, the governor. Hmm, I didn't know. I, I wasn't sure where we were going to go with that. But it passed. It passed on New Year's Eve. And I remember getting a text from Senator Harkman, I think he's going to pass it, I think he's going to sign it. And I'm like, here I am, it's New Year's Eve, and I'm, I'm, what am I doing? I'm texting the senator for, to see if, I said, I need to get a life. I really do. But that was great. You know, and we had a basis how we could figure out how we could tax that. So that become real property. Recently, I don't know if everyone realizes, but just last week, there was legislation that was passed for the spent fuel rods. It was sponsored by Assemblywoman Galiff and also Senator Harkman. I think that gets a little more challenging with the spent fuel rods, but at least we had a basis for the, the cask, because they cost to make about $1.2 million. So to me, it was a $1.2 million house. So that was the basis, how that all kind of started. But, you know, great group of guys to work with, and I just, I just very strongly feel that people should be recognized and acknowledged when they did a good job. And it was, it wasn't, it wasn't easy. And I remember the mayor, I always talk about this, the mayor in Oswego, oh, I had so many sleepless nights. Really? And your community is flourishing? They didn't shut their nuclear power plant in Oswego because the state decided to subsidize. We, people haven't been asking if they could because of the federal government saying now that they'll give money to keep nuclear power plants open. We're, we're not in that position. So we won't be able to keep this open over here. So, sorry about that. But it's, it's been an interesting road, a lot of meetings, a lot of time spent away from family, but your dedication was very much appreciated. And I have for each of you, and then Stephanie, right? Our anchor. What's up? Yes, I have one of those. I don't know if you'll be able to cash it. But I'd like you to stay because we're going to talk about the agreement with Holtech, what, what, the final. It's, it's the same when you guys were on the board, because what we were going to do, there's $200,000 for infrastructure. We were going to use that money to lower the taxes, this tax period, but it's, it's after the May 31st deadline. You know, we were hoping that it would be done in March, but, you know, we still had to tweak a few things and work a few things out. So, so the board will decide, you know, what to do next. So, so come on up, come on up. All of you. Okay, you have to talk Nick Zachary, Rich Funchen, Dwayne Jackson, Cheech Pasquale. And, and Nick isn't, Nick isn't going to like this, because I have the old seal here. So... It says, "In grateful appreciation of your dedication and service to the Village of Buchanan."
Take it away.
So Dwayne? Are you? Thank you. And notice the blue color. Rich Funchen? Thank you. And I have the dates of, of whom on the board. Cheech Pasquale? Thank you. And Nick Zachary? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Much appreciated. Oh, no, I should have, yeah. Okay. Oh, good, thank God. I always got, I always got picked on for that. Just take a quick picture. Thank you. One more, wait, hold on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That's your sticker.
Hi, Teresa. Sorry. That little one.
Thing's full.
This time of year.
Yeah, mine.
Okay. All right, so moving on to the agenda. Next, under New Business, is Consider a Motion to Open Public Hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing on Local Law Number 6, 2022, Amending Chapter 155, entitled Sewers to the Code of the Village Buchanan. So on a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. This, what we're doing here with our sewer code, from the recommendation of the engineer, we've updated our code. Any questions from the board? Comments? Yeah, we've talked about this, this is like, this is nothing new.
Few times.
Just a few. Just wanted to make sure it was enough times. Okay, so on a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, anyone in the public would like to ask any questions on this? No? Okay. So on a motion to close the public hearing? Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees, the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said village board at the Municipal Building, 236 Tate Avenue, Buchanan, to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law amending Chapter 155, entitled Sewers to the Code of the Village Buchanan. And whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the local newspaper, whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regular scheduled meeting of the village board on June 7th, 2022, at 7:30, at the Municipal Building at 236 Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees, the Village of Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be for, now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts Local Law Number 6, 2022, amending Chapter 155 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan, a copy of which is attached hereto and made part of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the village clerk here be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. So, on a motion to authorize the adoption of Local Law Number 622?
Make a motion to adopt Local Law 6-2022.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, the next is, this is, I spoke about this before. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot with Nuclear Asset Management Company, LLC, and Holtech Decommissioning International. So we have come to an agreement with, with Holtech for, it's an agreement for the next four years. And I think, I think with the negotiation, I think we did pretty well. Let me just, so it will be, for the first year, I don't know where I put my notes, anyhow, $1.2 million and $200,000 more for an infrastructure agreement. So that will be a total of $1.4 million we'll be receiving from them. When we were, the last payment with Entergy was approximately, say, $2.5 million plus an infrastructure agreement. The next year, I'm sorry, Marcus, you have the numbers there. I had them in front of me, and I, I apologize. Oh, thanks, hon. Thank you. I got it. Sorry, sorry. So for the tax year 2022, 2023, 1.2, like I said, plus the 200,000. That's Dan. And tax year 2023, 2024, it'll be 1.1 million, and the infrastructure amount will be 300,000. Tax year 2024, 2025, the pilot payment will be 1 million, and the infrastructure amount will be 400,000. In 2025, 2026, it will be 900,000, and the infrastructure payment will be 300,000. The property should be released, part of the property, the 60 Acres North, should be released in 2024 or early 2025. Thanks, Dan.
Excuse me, just a brief correction. Number four?
Oh, sorry.
The, the fourth year is an option year. So there's three years and then an option.
Okay. So we can, but at least it gives us some certainty at that point for the fourth year.
Correct.
So, so some decisions will have to be made there in 2024. So we're hoping that the property is released and that a developer will purchase it and develop it and put it back on the tax rolls for whatever the development is. So that will, that will certainly help, too. So I think, I think it was a fair agreement. I know the previous board worked on this, and like I said, you know, we were hoping to vote on that in March. And then now the current board has had some input into it also. There were some things that we still had to deal with, and so, you know, I think in the end, I think it was a fair agreement considering it's a non-operating plant. All right. So I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'm gonna have a, I'll also have on a question also, unless any of the board members have a comment to make at this time. Anybody? Okay. Whereas, "After negotiations with Nuclear Asset Management Company, LLC, and Holtech Decommissioning International, LLC, the company owner of the Indian Point 2 and 3 and associated property and equipment, the facility, a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement, has been received and reviewed by the Board of Trustees in the Village of Buchanan. Whereas New York Real Property Tax, Section 45, permits the exemption from taxation of nuclear-powered electric generating and formerly generating facilities upon adoption of a local law resolution by any tax jurisdiction in which such a facility is located to confer the exemption and to authorize said tax jurisdiction, to enter into an agreement with the owner of such facility to provide for payments in lieu of taxes. And whereas pursuant to Local Law 5 of 2022 duly adopted at the May 3rd, 2022 meeting, the village provided for the exemption of nuclear power, electric generating, and formerly generating facilities from taxations, special ad valarium levies and special assessments imposed by or within the village. And whereas the pilot agreement annexed hereto will be for a period of three years with an option for the fourth year, and will exempt the facility from the real property tax assessment rules of the Village of Buchanan to authorize by Section 45 of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York. And whereas the proposed pilot provides for a payment of over $4.2 million over the life of the agreement to the Village of Buchanan will provide for a stable stream of revenue. Now be it therefore resolved that the village board approves the proposed pilot agreement providing for annual payments as set forth in such agreement, and be it further resolved that the mayor of the Village of Buchanan is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the foregoing pilot agreement on behalf of the Village of Buchanan. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective immediately." So on a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a payment in lieu of taxes, can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next, um... Oh, the next is an infrastructure agreement. So when we had negotiated with Entergy before, there was never an infrastructure agreement. So this is kind of a carryover to the other agreement. So this is in addition to the pilot payment. So like I said, I read the numbers off before, and that will be, for this year, it'll be 200,000. So what we were trying to do, this 200,000, we were trying to put it into our budget, which would have lowered the budget. budget, which would have lowered the percentage this year, but we didn't finish the agreement. So we have an additional two hundred thousand this year, which we'll talk, the board will talk at the next workshop of whether to use it for infrastructure this year, if we want to do more roadwork, which, you know, and Anthony, you can tell us too, the price of blacktop and everything is just, is out of sight, so. Yeah, yeah, so, so, you know, it's a discussion the board will have whether they want to use that money this year or hold it off to next year. Hopefully, the prices will come down and, you know, maybe we can do more roadwork next year because there's some large roads that are going to need to be, to be done. So we'll, we'll have that discussion. Whereas the Village of Buchanan has been in negotiations with nuclear asset management LLC and Holtek Decommissioning International LLC, the company, with respect to the village seeking compensation for unique infrastructure impacts associated with its hosting of formerly generating nuclear power facility during its decommissioning. And whereas the village and the company have come to an agreement wherein the company has agreed to compensate the village for said infrastructure impacts on an annual basis beginning with its first payment of two hundred thousand on or before July first, twenty twenty-two, and continuing pursuant to the scheduled amounts contained with the, in the infrastructure agreement, along with two percent annual increase for a period of three years with a fourth year option to renew unless earlier terminated pursuant to the terms of the agreement. And whereas the village's desires of entering into said agreement, now therefore be resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign said agreement, a copy of which is annexed hereto and available. Did you, I just felt, I just felt like the building. I heard like, did you feel that? No?
No.
I'm sorry.
You all right?
Yeah, I'm okay. That's why I stopped, I was like, oh my God. It's like somebody maybe. Could be. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign said agreement, a copy of which is annexed hereto and available to the public for review during normal business hours. So, on a motion to approve the infrastructure agreement, can I have a second, please?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And I want to take, I just want to take a moment. You know, the team, the board works on these things also, but I really have to give kudos and recognition to our attorney, Stephanie Portius. She was on the forefront of the negotiations with Holtek and going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, until, until she was exhausted, but, and she's still exhausted. So Stephanie, thank you. I know it was a lot of work. Marcus also had a lot of input and worked a lot with the, the infrastructure part of it too. So, you know, I want to thank both of you. Much appreciated, good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
We've had a resignation from our highway department, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Velders. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is, I'm going to be making a motion to authorize the employment of recreation personnel for the camp, which starts the end of this month. Time goes by fast. So the director, so I'd like to make a motion, the employment of recreation personnel for camp, the director is six thousand fifty dollars, assistant director, four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, the nurse, eighteen dollars an hour, laborer, fifteen dollars an hour, art specialist, fifteen dollars an hour, aftercare, thirteen dollars an hour, senior counselors, twelve dollars an hour, junior counselors, ten dollars an hour, junior counselors in training, eight dollars an hour, and counselors in training, four dollars and fifty cents. So on a motion to approve that, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next is, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the employment of recreation personnel for the pool at the following rates. WSI, water safety instructor, that's twenty-five dollars an hour, director is twenty dollars an hour, lifeguard, well, it will vary with experience, so from fourteen to eighteen dollars an hour. The headguard is seventeen dollars an hour. So a motion to authorize the employment of the recreation personnel, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is something we do every year. So the next is, the, make a motion to approve the proposal for planning and development advisors. Marcus, would you like to say anything about this?
Sure, our contract has expired with the previous planner. So as the board, as you mentioned through your opening remarks, we actually hired a planner to look at the rezoning of the Indian Point property, David Smith, which is here, David, if you don't mind moving, coming up to the counter, to the podium. So since our contract with the prior planner expired, the idea was to try to focus everything on the one planner, so I would think it could be focused and we can look down at Indian Point, but holistically, the whole village. So we discussed that at one of our meetings in the past, so David Smith is here. Hopefully, the board will entertain to reclaim his services and he can then review the entire village, not just one section, half the village, but going to Indian Point. So David is here to answer any questions from the board.
Okay. I know, David, we've, we've worked on the, we're working on the rezoning of the two hundred forty acres of the Indian Point property. And I understand you took a walk not too long ago over on the property, the sixty acres, right? You were able, you were able to get there?
Yes, we walked the sixty acres and then, not the balance of the property, but not all of it.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, I had a general sense of the scale and the scope and the topography and I think one of the things that impressed me the most when I first drove in, because this is really my first time on, on that property, when you first drive in, there's the sign there that says safety. And I don't remember all of the words, but it says safety, safety first, always safety last. And that really impressed me about how important that, that concept was with respect to that facility and with respect to the community. So, and I think it's a tremendous opportunity for the village to begin exploring opportunities for the redevelopment of that site.
Yeah, it'll be, and I think Marcus took the walk with you last year, it was Stephanie, Marcus and I, we, before the brush started getting crazy, we were over there and it's, it's really a beautiful piece of property right on the Hudson River. I know the topo is not that great. I know there's a lot of rock there, but in today's construction world, I'm assuming that things can happen.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, go ahead. So I, I, you know, we've worked together with, with that, I, you know, I think you would be a good fit for the rest of the village to, to work with us on other planning issues. Does the board have any questions?
Well, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith is going to be performing the functions that F. P. Clark used to perform for the planning board, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because the other, the other agreement had expired and we weren't really happy with what, what happened with the previous planning company had done in reference to the Indian Point property in the Village of Buchanan. So I think that's a nice way of saying it. So, so David, any other comments for us?
Well, actually, I woke up at three thirty this morning thinking about what I was going to say when I came in.
It's not that busy.
And all of a sudden, it's like, well, you know, and so, just very briefly, I think one of the, if I'll pass along some of the best advice I ever got as a planner, and I was a young planner and I had just been retained to work with the Village of Sleepy Hollow. And it was just after the General Motors plant had closed and they decommissioned the plant. And we had a meeting with the, with the building and the Real Estate Institute and the mayor at the time, Phil Zagarelli, he had just been elected, reelected, it was his second term as mayor. And we're all sitting around and, and I'm a young planner and I've got the stars in my eyes about the site. And we're all sitting there and then Phil, he turns to us and he goes, you know, at the end of the day, who puts their head down on a pillow in the Village of Sleepy Hollow? And we all looked around and he said, I do. I'm the one who has to live with the decisions that get made. And to me, that was the most important piece of advice because I'm here to help you, to help the community, give you advice to the best of my abilities. But you're the folks who have to live with the decision. So it's, and I, and I think that really helps guide me because, you know, I can't, you know, and the current mayor, Ken Ray, who has a very dry sense of humor, he likes to make fun of me every now and then. He knows that, that I like, that hockey is one of my passions and he always says, you know, well, Mr. Smith, yeah, he's a very good planner, but his, his idea of good mixed use is a bar inside of a hockey rink. So I, I, I try and bring my passion, I love this job, I've been doing it for over thirty years. My wife says that I'm the only person she knows who's still doing what they went to college for, you know, and, and so I, I'm very passionate about the process, about the industry, about the profession, and I look forward to helping the Village of Buchanan.
Thank you. And, and I think you, you said, you were involved with the General Motors property in Sleepy Hollow, which, you know, there was another big industry that just left and left the community to figure it out.
Yeah, and that was, when I first started, that was nineteen ninety-seven. I know I don't look that old, but, and part of the issue, the village had instituted a zoning code for redevelopment of the site. And part of the zoning code called for the redevelopment of the historic Hudson River Village, the development, redevelopment should be in the image of a historic Hudson River Village. And there wasn't real clarity as to what does that mean? And so I was fortunate enough to work with the village to get a grant, to do a planning study, and I went up and down the Hudson River Valley, looking at different communities of what makes up a historic Hudson River Village. You know, one of the joys of that project, my son, who was like three and a half at the time, had a Tonka truck. And so I'd be running around Cold Spring and Beacon and Newburgh and Hudson, and he'd be tagging along with his little Tonka truck following right after me. And, but that, that, that process helped, we prepared a waterfront linkage study, which had all sorts of design components in it that helped guide the eventual development. And then eventually turned into a design guidelines book that the village has used as part of the redevelopment. And I'm happy to say now, as of this year, Sleepy Hollow is expecting their three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand square foot of development, and they're approaching one hundred certificate of occupancy for residents down at the General Motors site.
So their site was shut down since ninety-seven?
It was actually, the, the plant closed in ninety-five and then it was, it took several years for decommissioning and was actually cleaned, I think by nineteen ninety-nine. At that point, General Motors had gone into a process of selecting a developer. Roseland was eventually selected. They had a lot of experience with the redevelopment of those types of properties on the New Jersey shoreline. And so they took the, the process through the environmental review, environmental impact statement process. And then the, the process concluded around two thousand and seven with the final environmental impact statement and the finding statement. And then there were a series of lawsuits. General Motors went into bankruptcy and all that kind of came out in two thousand and eleven truly. And then after two thousand and eleven, General Motors went back out to the development community, found a new developer. And essentially it's been since two thousand and fourteen till now, when they've had a very concerted effort at redevelopment of the site.
So it took many, many years for that property to?
It was like Rome. It wasn't.
All right, interesting. All right. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposal from planning and, the planning and development advisors, and that's you.
That's me.
So can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Okay, the next is to, a motion to increase the maintenance bond requirements for road opening permits to five years. Marcus, I know you've talked to George, our engineer, on this.
Sure, just to give you some information, we got this booklet that was created, standard construction detail specifications, I can, that shows you what kind of construction has to happen to roadways, what kind of deposit has to be done and so on and so forth. But we never had some kind of a warranty or a maintenance timeline. So normally when Con Edison digs a road and something happens a year or two years later, it's up in the air what's going to happen. We were lucky enough, when they redid on Tate Avenue about five years ago, and they just finished repaving it to the curb, I think they did it to the center line or curb to curb, I forgot myself.
Originally, when, was maybe about five years ago, it went into there that it would, they would have to do half of the road and they would also, I want to talk to you about Blakely Avenue, they also need to do blacktop around the edgings. And they didn't do that on Blakely. But anyhow, so in there went, and the standard would be that if they dug up the road, that they would have to, Con Ed would have to pave half of the road from the curb to the center line. So that, that went in there.
Correct.
So now you're gonna?
We never had a timeline in regards to how long that would last.
Yeah.
So out of, they agreed when they did Blakely Avenue, they say, listen, you have nothing in your specifications, but because you did it within five years, we'll be happy enough to do it for you. And then they, they were nice to say, you should really put in your guidelines, so therefore we know in the future that it's a five-year warranty on any roads. So as long as we add it on, add it in here, which I'm asking the board to do, then this will be part of our document that will be given to Con Edison. And then that way they put it in their files and they know if they're going to do a road that's going to be five years, they have to do curb to curb. Whenever there's a depression in the road or something, or a sinkhole in the road.
It doesn't settle, right, yeah.
They have to do the entire road. So that's all we're talking about, doing that here. So officially it's adopted, it's put in this booklet, given to Con Edison and Verizon and cable, any utility will have to do the same thing.
Okay.
So that's all we're trying to do tonight.
Good, thank you.
How about independent contractors?
Independent contractor, well, independent contractors, there's a schedule of a deposit, and that deposit will be held for five years and the same thing. So, so we can go after utility, utilities last forever, but for example, if you're going to do a street opening permit for your house and you need to get on, on the public right of way, there'll be a deposit that's listed on the type of work that has to be done, and that has to be kept for five years.
So we're going to hold the independent contractors escrow for a period of five years?
That's correct. That's a warrant, that's a warranty. So in case they disappear or they go bankrupt, we have money to redo the road if we have to.
Who determines the amount for the escrow for the homeowner?
I'll explain you this, this is actually the type of construction and then what the length of the road is, and also what the type of construction, if a water line, sewer line, the depth of the road. So that's actually, that's a condition. And there's a section in the plans that records what kind of condition the work is in, and it goes from one to eight. So it goes in from fifteen hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars, depending on the scope of the work and how deep the work has to be done. We actually copied, we actually, I had to say, we copied this from another municipality that has been doing this, and we actually then modified it to match our, our, our requirements. And actually now we're holding people, help people more in regards to make sure we have a warranty or have money set aside to repair the road if something happens in the future.
So are you going to modify the building permits? To include that information?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's going to be required?
Anything that has to do with going on the village, a village right, on the village road, every contractor will have, will get a copy of this as well.
Well, it's got to be included in the building permits so the homeowner knows
That's correct.
why we're asking them more money.
That's correct.
So we're going to change the building permit?
Well, it's, well, the building permit doesn't change, this is, this is escrow. So there's a deposit they're holding. So everything goes fine, they get the money back in five years. While building permit we hold forever, because it's a fee.
Yeah, and we, we've seen different construction where the road is opened and then a few years later, it's sinking. And Marcus, I want, I want to thank you, I want to mention this again, with the, the road in front of Tate Avenue, Con Edison came through and thank you for negotiating with them to do curb to curb on that instead of half of the road. So that'll, that'll look nice when that gets done. So thank you for doing the negotiation on that. So on a motion to increase the maintenance on bond requirements for road opening permits to five years, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So now we go to information from officers and departments, justice court reports. I know the court has been catching up. So for April twenty twenty-two, this one is fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And then there's also another report for May, and that is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Police reports for April twenty- Police reports for April twenty twenty-two, received and filed. Highway report for April twenty twenty-two, that's received and filed. There's all different kinds of stuff here. Household trash, seventy-one tons, bulk and dumpsters, eighteen tons, dumpsters only ten tons, bag leaves, like eight tons, metal, two point four three tons, chipping, twenty-four yards, E-way, eighteen TVs and thirteen monitors. People are always interested in, you know, what gets picked up here. Waste water plant, treated wastewater, twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-six gallons, sludge removal, a hundred and three gallons. Building department, April twenty twenty-two, that report has been received. Planning board, April twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and zoning board, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, those have been received. Lot of reports here. And Buchanan engine, April twenty twenty-two, one structure fire, four EMS assist, other emergencies, two. Mutual aid given, one. Mutual aid received, zero. So a total of eight. Prosecutor's report, just received that this evening, thank you. And next is attorney's report.
I have one better protective session.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Please, please.
And so... Got it. All right, just wondering if that down. Administrator's report. Marcus, what do you have for us tonight?
A couple things to just give the village board an update on the public. Route nine A sidewalks. The covert, that structure is coming in, according to the report from the contractor, on the tenth. That's gonna be coming in, they'll install that, and then what, after that, they finish the sidewalk on the top. They're hoping that the Route nine A side will be totally completed by the end, end of this month.
Oh, good. Everyone will be happy with that.
So that, that's, that's a long time. We've been waiting for that, so hopefully that will be done soon.
Wrap that up.
The pavilion, that's totally completed.
Good.
They just finished installing the lights as well as the tennis courts. So those lights are in as well. So something that we know, we talked briefly about, is what does the village board want to do now with the tennis courts? Do you wanna, do you wanna redo the tennis courts as they are? Do you wanna turn it to basketball courts? I know we had a discussion about that before. A big thing that's going around in that is pick, pick, pickleball.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, pickleball. That's the big things going on. So that's another opportunity if the board thinks the public would like to use that. So I'm just throwing it out there. But the lights are in, it looks great. The pavilion is done, it looks great. So might be opportunity for the, the tennis courts are pretty cracked. There's, there's little sinkholes in it, so, you know, we need to do something there, hopefully in the future. So something to think about, and it'd be nice that, that we can do something more active, and then people can use it more. So it's an opportunity to do something, which is a great asset the village has for the kids and everything else. And maybe something the seniors can play, and older people if they wanna play, something like that.
Think they'll play pickleball?
It's very, it's big, all, all-
What's, what's the surface?
It's, it's like a tennis court, but it's like half- Yes. Yeah, you play with a, almost like a hard paddle and a whiffle, big wiffle ball bat. And a lot of older people play that can't play tennis anymore, but they wanna be more active. So it's, yeah, it's like a big ping pong table, exactly. The net is lower, so, you know, so it's very big in a lot of places. I actually saw it on, I know it was a special report on TV the other day about that's really big across the country. So something, if we're gonna do something, maybe do something for the future.
Okay.
So, so something to think about. We actually also applied for reimbursements for the pavilion and for Route nine A. DOT responders say they received our reimbursement, they let everything looks pretty good.
Good.
Route nine, and the pavilion, and the pavilion also, we sent reimbursement for that, waiting for that to come in. And I know we've been talking about the IMA agreement with the town of Cortland. We got some bills from that. That's actually been submitted for reimbursement as well. So let you know, we're trying to do that process. And that's all I have for you guys tonight.
We're gonna just go right around the table. Trustee Murray, what do you have for us tonight?
Oh, thanks. I want to thank everyone who came out to Memorial Day picnic, uh, not Memorial Day picnic, Memorial Day parade in Montrose. It was very well attended. Also wanted to thank BV School and Frank G. Lindsay for inviting veterans to come speak at their school, as well as marching their individual parades. I was able to make the BV one, and I couldn't make the FGL. But it's always nice when the school district reaches out to local organizations so that the kids can see that there is a different perspective than what they see every day in school. A lot of people don't know that's, it's good that they can come up and, and talk to us and, you know, just show their appreciation, show their willingness to understand the duty and dedication it takes to keep us free. Also wanted to say that there's a, a veterans picnic on June fifteenth at noon at Charles Cook Pool. It's, it was the picnic that was usually hosted by the village, but because of the repairs to the pavilion, we couldn't really schedule it down there. So it's gonna be June fifteenth at Charles Cook Pool. And if you could RSVP with the town, if you're gonna attend, they usually don't really need RSVP, they're just looking for a, a round number. And they're, they're usually, even if you don't RSVP, show up up there, you'll be taken care of. I had spoken to the planning board chairman about any comments that he might have about the accessory apartment law that I'm looking to change. I'm also, if any of the trustees or if anybody has any more comments before I write the final draft, I'd appreciate it if you can get it to me so we can discuss it at the next executive session, and maybe schedule a public hearing for anything that we're, that we can agree upon. But I did reach out to the planning board chair, and he's gonna review his data. I don't know if you're aware, but there was an issue issuing a permit with a accessory apartment a couple of months ago. And they followed the law, but there were comments from some people that they wanted the law changed to help it be eas, more easily enforced, and to give the planning board a little more teeth. So he's gonna look through it and hopefully get some input from the rest of his board members also. I got some feedback from residents that a broadcast channel is not working. I had spoken to Cindy and Marcus, and I was wondering if there's any update on when we could possibly be able to watch our meetings on our television again. I wasn't aware that it was down. Apparently it's been down for quite some time. If you guys could tell me when it went down and what the prognosis is.
It's hard to tell when it went down, but we're not, I'm not watching it every day, and so I don't know when it went down. We have an IT issue between the down, the files being downloaded and being sent to a, a called electronic system that has to be done. I actually talked to Mike about it. Mike is sick and fat, so Mike is gonna be hopefully coming by probably this week, meet with the IT company and try to get that information downloaded. I mean, the good news, all the media's on the website, they're not on TV channel, so the data is there and the videos are there. We just have to get it updated onto the sys, electronic system. So we're working on it, and hopefully it'll be repaired soon.
Also, a couple of months ago, I had spoken about the, the Journal News Express that was being delivered unwanted to some residents. I know some papers are still being left in the driveways of houses that are for sale, for houses that are no longer occupied. I was wondering if anybody ever reached out to the Journal News to see what was going on?
Yes, I did. I sent an email and a phone call, and they said they're gonna look into it and get back to me. I follow up again. But I did call and send them an email as well.
So did they tell you whether these people had previously subscribed, or they're just throwing this stuff out?
They wouldn't tell me anything with the phone. They said, we'll look into it, get back to you. So I'll try again.
Sean, I can tell you this, I had one in my driveway this weekend, and I don't subscribe, so there's-
No, no, there's, there's houses that are for sale that have them in the, in the driveway that, they're just throwing them out there.
Yeah.
We, we should at least write them a fine for pollution, you know, for littering. You know, that's within our purview without their, you know, why not? I can't go throw papers in people's houses, why should they be able to?
But I think, the last time, I think a way to resolve that, because some people do like to get that paper. So maybe if they, if they're gonna deliver, then maybe leave some at the village hall, and then if somebody wants it, they can pick it up. Yeah, so just, you know, it's a compromise.
And the last thing I have, I wanted to discuss in the executive session, the prosecutor's report. I think there's some material inaccuracies in there that I'd like to get corrected. And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Steve, what do you have for us?
Yes, I attended the Cortland Engine Company parade with trustee Stewart. It was a great event. And just want to congratulate Buchanan Fire Department for winning best dressed and best pumper overall. Another thing, I, I wanted to see maybe if Marcus, I don't know how to start the process, but I believe, you know, if we could start to look into some sort of crosswalk near the Dunkin' Donuts, near the Carbone Building. I don't know if you have to get DOT involved.
Yeah.
But it's very dangerous over there for residents. I know a lot of kids from high school, you know, walk over there, so anything we can do with that. I know there's been some, some talk about the, the village website. Some of the links were not working for the calendar, and I was wondering if, if we could take a look at that.
I, I look, I, I look at, I'm just any issues with it. If you give me specific of what's going on?
Well, when you click on the June, the, the link, it pulls up the May calendar, and the same with the newsletter.
Okay.
And there's some outdated information, so just wondering if, you know, somebody could take a look at the website.
I can check the calendar, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you get, if you get in detail about outdated-
Yeah, and one of the links for the board members, it has, you know, the previous information on there.
Oh, okay, it's probably a different page, okay.
Just another little thing, I, I don't know if maybe this would be Mike Minor, but if there's a possibility that we could get either a bigger screen or something, an alternative to the monitor that we have for the public here, I, I think that'd be helpful. Maybe something we can mount, maybe possibly on the ceiling. Just not something that sits on the, on the chair, I think would be, for the Zoom, you know, for the public to view.
Oh, for the public view?
Yeah. So if there's any presentations, just something.
I think, Marcus, you had mentioned that, that you had wanted to do something-
Yeah, I was, I was looking at a better communication system setup here, so we can actually hang it from the ceiling.
Right.
Uh, uh, two TV screens, like same size, on both sides.
Yep.
So that way you can see on one side, the public can see on the other side, HDMI connection. So I'm working on that kind of connectivity, and then, but I want to also have the capability, someone was to come to present. They can also then present wisely, so I am working on trying to make a better, up-to-date system.
Excellent. All right.
But it'll be a larger screen.
Actually, I can, obviously, I can get a larger screen, yes.
Great.
And then they can broadcast off the larger screen.
Perfect. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Steve. Dan, what do you have for us?
Thanks. Yeah, again, I, I attended the Cortland Engine Company Montrose Bazaar with trustee Laker. And it was a nice turnout, nice evening. I did want to mention also too that we had our local school elections. And the new trustees for the Pendleton School Board are now Jeremy Bassow, Erica Chrissy Mills, and Stephanie Hickey. And it's nice to see two Buchanan residents now sitting on the school board. So congrats to all those people. Also, I just wanted to mention that I've had several inquiries, inquiries about the house on Bannon Avenue, and also the house on Blakely, that sit there vacant, deteriorating. They've, at this point, they're, they're pretty much a hazard. You know, God forbid, it, you know, kids wander in there, fall through a floor into a basement. You know, last I heard about the Bannon Avenue house, that was turned over to the town of Cortland. You know, what's their intent? What are they doing? What's the timeframe, you know?
I know I spoke to Tom Wood about a month ago about the Bannon Avenue house. So the town took possession of it, and he, I forget what he said, but I'll get back to you on it. But it was like, there was only like a few months more, and then they could put it up for sale. There was like a timeframe that they had to, once they took it over, there was a timeframe they had to wait. And I think it's, I think it's like another three months. And so the town will, you know, will sell it. So we'll see what happens with that. And we are going, can we discuss it at an executive session, or you want to wait to the next workshop? For the MREM? Okay, yeah. No, no, I wouldn't discuss it now, but I don't know if it's something you want to discuss.
That Bannon Avenue house has sat there for, I mean, it's, it's beyond years.
Yeah.
It's ten, fifteen, twenty, probably more than twenty years that it's sat there like this.
I'm trying to think.
If I lived next to it, I wouldn't be happy about it, yeah.
Yeah, but you know what the problem was? That was a whole, that, that got to be a whole mess. The woman that lived there had three sons. So two of the sons had passed, the woman went into a nursing home.
Yeah, I, I know there's a history there, but now that it's with the town, let's try and push the envelope, let people do something. It sat there long enough.
Yeah, I would imagine they want to get rid of it too, you know, to get it off their records. So, but yeah, there was a history to that. And then now all the sons have passed, she has passed, big leans on the house, nursing home, back taxes, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's not, it's not an easy situation. Sorry. What else you have for us, Dan?
That's it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Trustee Capicotti, what do you have for us tonight?
Okay, so I had the honor of marching in the Memorial Day Parade with our veterans. And side by side with Teresa, it was a great event to see the kids come out and support. And Teresa gave a little lesson in her, in her talk.
My little history lesson, yeah.
A little history lesson, yes. And so did Sean. And trustee Murray was a big part of that event. I wanted to thank him. He did a great job. And so did the Cortland Engine Company, they did a great job. It was nice to see the families out there in support of our veterans. Teresa thanked our previous board, which is something that I would highlight. They, I want to say thank you as well. They did a great job, you know, and Teresa did a great job on, you know, commemorating them. The whole tech decision, Stephanie did a great job with that. And Marcus, I know you had a lot to do it as well, and it's finally completed. And it's great to see that we're moving forward with that. Other than that, I have nothing else to say. Oh, yes, I do. Yes, I do have something else to say. I'm, I'm looking into, Marcus, I did discuss this with you previously, about changing the village speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. I think it's, it's a necessity. I think we have some small roads that thirty-five miles an hour, thirty to thirty-five is way too fast. So I think we need to look into changing the village's speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, Nike can put out a notice.
Nike, just past that village, just can make all of your rules, twenty-five miles an hour.
Well, there you go.
Good timing. I thought that's why you were saying it.
No, I'm saying it for another reason, but I think that this is good timing. I think it's, I, I, there's some small roads that people are going in. And, and it's hard for our police to do the job, you know, within those boundaries. So if, if we drop it down, then they can really enforce it. And, and I feel that's a necessity. And that's really all that I have.
All right.
You get the Nike stays? They're valuable, right?
Very good. All right, thank you, Anthony. So I don't have much this evening, but I do want to mention that the week of June thirteenth, BV, Buchanan Ver Plank School, is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. So they're supposed to be sending me some information, which I hope I get real soon, so I'll pass that on to the board. They're gonna have like a parade and different things. And also, we can put that on Facebook to let the residents know what's happening there. I unfortunately could not make it to the Montrose Parade. I always enjoy going to that every year. The Cortland Engine, I'm sorry, I call them Montrose Fire Department, but it's Cortland Engine. But, you know, I, I want to thank the board for being there to represent the village. And I think, I think, I think, that's all I have for this evening.
I, I just forgot one question.
Sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Last month or the month before, we had talked about hiring a real estate agent to put the property on Blakely and-
I'm sorry, I did get, I get two proposals from two real estate agents. I'll email, I forgot to do it. I'll email both of you guys the proposal. So thanks for reminding me about that.
Okay, good. Yeah.
That's all, thanks.
All right, thank you. So next is comments from the floor. Nick, did you want to give an update on the LWRP, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program that we're-
Waiting one month to do that.
I know, see? And now's your opportunity.
Hi, guys. As you know or don't know, the mayor asked me to stay as a liaison to the LWRP. And I did go to the meeting on May fifth. A little bit of an issue in being the liaison is that all I can do is try to communicate some things to you, and likewise you can feed back to me, but it's you guys that will have the decision-making power. And at some point, the village will have to hold a public hearing and approve the LWRP. So while I can be the liaison, if it helps in any way, I'm very happy to continue doing it. It's, you guys do need to review the LWRP, at least there's the sections that have to do with Buchanan. And if you go to, and there, there's a, the process is gonna go a little slow at this point, because two things have to happen. At some point, the village has to hold a public hearing and approve the LWRP, whether they suggest changes to it or have comments. It'd be, be nice to look into that now and have comments now, because the state also has to approve the LWRP. They're the ones that put up the grant money for this. And the state, I found out at this last meeting on May- I found out at this last meeting on May 5th, is, is probably gonna take, could take a year or two to complete that process, which is really bureaucratically horrible. But that's, that's the story. So, um, if the state suggests any changes and you hold a public hearing, you might not have the final version after the state imposes some changes. They may or may not. So, um, the best thing is just to, when you have a chance, review it a bit. I know you have Sean, cause this came up last year. Um, and Mayor Nikobak was at the meeting as well. So she's a bit up on it. Some of you probably are not very familiar with any context unless you've had time to look at it. If you, and then, uh, right now, while there's sort of, we're in limbo before any of these public hearings, there is a comment form on the LWRP website. If you go to the village website, all the way at the, I couldn't even find it. Then I found it way down at the bottom, at the very bottom of the page, there, there's a, a link to the LWRP website. And the town of Cortland website also has a link. And there is a, um, you can read the full survey results. Um, so you could see what input, there's, there was a specific, um, survey air, section dealing with Buchanan. You could look at people's comments. It's pretty fascinating because, you know, you'll get like a lot of people that, you know, want mixed use. A lot of people want river access. And then there'll be one person that says, I think we need to have a floating obstacle course on the river. So, you know, it's, it's kind of fun to read the public comments, actually. Uh, but anyway, I would suggest when you have a chance, review the LWRP. Um, if you have any comments, you can submit them from, directly from the website. And, um, I don't think we're having another meeting until the, um, uh, till this, later in the summer. I asked the question, well, how do we know? Do we, do we hold our public hearing before the state does? Or do we have to wait two years for the state? You know? And, uh, you know, how do we resolve that? And they said they'd get back to me at the next meeting. So we'll see. Um, so that's it on that. I did want to just, if I.
On the LWRP as well, did John talk to you about the, um, secret process? He said he was gonna reach out to you. Did he reach out to you?
I, I haven't gotten back to him. I, I got a message from him. I have to get back to him.
Okay. If you don't, I just to give the board, um, as part of the LWRP, they have to do a secret process. So somebody has to be a lead agency. So the consultant is recommending to, to allow the town to be the lead agency. If you, oh, also you gotta do, oh, the board can be a lead agency separately. And then you have two step, whole pub, whole public processes.
Parallel.
So he is recommending that, that the town take the lead role as the lead agency. And then the village can provide comments, something like that. But if you, then if you, if you want to do a lead agency, then you gotta go through a whole separate process as well. So I know John was gonna talk to you about it.
He did reach out to me. I didn't get a chance to.
Okay. So maybe you talked, maybe you can provide something that the board can know what the process will entail.
Okay.
We're a long way away from a seeker.
Yeah. But we didn't know, we have to notify the state who is gonna be intended to be the lead agency.
Who's gonna pay for it?
It's part of the grant money.
Okay.
State grant money.
If the town is the lead agent for Seeker, we don't have to pay.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, either way, cause that's part of the grant.
Yeah.
Unless you run the money out of the grant. So if you want two separate processes, I don't know what the cost of that would be.
We're, we're just a, a piece of that puzzle because it's Mansville. We're a plank. You know, it's, it's, so we're just one section of that. So, but it's up to the board, you know.
And if they become. It's a, it's a useful thing like any master plan.
Sure. Absolutely.
Because then it gives you a, gives you a template, uh, which helps you, uh, often can help you getting grant money and, and.
Well, we, we could take care of that. We could have a resolution next month to appoint the town as lead agent for Seeker for LWRP. We don't have to wait for anything else.
And if they're lead agent, then do, does the village have to worry about a public hearing?
No.
It's handled by the town.
Probably be done in the town. You can still provide public comments for that process and everything else.
I know the last meeting was supposed to be at the pavilion. I'd like to see at least one of the meetings because that would help the residents of Ver Plank and the village Buchanan residents. It might be easier for them to come, you know, to the meeting.
Yeah. Well, I'll certainly let the board know if there's, when the next meeting is scheduled. Um, so a couple, if I can, just to quickly, a couple of dredging up a couple of things that are like sort of loose ends to me. On the logo redesign, I wanted to let people know that if they, uh, cause people were emailing me to, you know, to see what happened with the judging and everything. If you guys did not like any of the designs and you're not gonna adopt a new logo, fine. If you guys are going to, whatever you're gonna do, uh, do it. Let me know so I could reach out to people. Um, you know, if you, whether you like the designs or not is up to you guys.
I think we all said, we all agreed on the design, didn't we?
I think we received the information. I don't think as a board, we really spoke about what the next steps were.
We haven't discussed it. Nick, I'd like to, the next workshop, I'd like to discuss that. I, I, I think one we're, we're kind of interested in, but I, I don't know. To me, I, I wish we could have put a little of our history in there too. That's all I'm saying. You know, I, I think we kind of all agreed on one of the designs.
Well, you can decide whatever you like. I, I'm not, you know, it's, that's your decision. Uh, you can, you can reject all the designs. You could pick your favorite design. You could do whatever you like. I just, if you're going to, uh, I would just like to let the people know that have been asking me for the, you know, did they, let them know, thank you for participating, but you didn't win. I, you know, I'll, I'll do that email. I have all the, you know, the files. Um, and the other thing was, uh, last workshop, I think it was when I was here, the kayak dock thing came up and there was some disadvantage, some problems as far as how, how far in and out the tide moves and how do you resolve that? And it maybe poses a challenge. Uh, so, uh, I don't know if you decided anything finally on that, but I did want to point something out, especially for the two new board members. Uh, if you're not familiar with the recreation fund that we have, it is a fund that's, uh, gets, every time a, a development goes in, each unit requires a $2,000 contribution to that. So, and this, uh, means that there will, if there's further developments, there's gonna be some more money going into that. There's over $200,000 there now. And whether we do a kayak dock or not, I highly encourage the board, we had discussed this and, you know, I mean, I don't know how many years we're saying, let's use that rec fund in some positive way. It can only be used for enhancements to the recreation program. There's a little bit of, uh, you know, way in interpreting that. But, but, uh, I highly encourage the board to clean up that park. Get that broken up concrete out of there. Just pour river rock. Let people walk in with a kayak if they want to, even if you don't do a dock. Bench, a couple of the bench, concrete old, concrete benches that are kind of hideous and fall over occasionally and, uh, get a couple of new benches fixed up. The, the park is a gem, but it's shabby. And, um, you know, while I consider my 12 years on the board to have had successes, not getting that park cleaned up to me was a failure. So I failed. Maybe you guys can get that done. But, uh, that rec money, uh, would be well spent to do that. And there will be more money coming in if, if new developments come into the village. So go get it. Go get it.
One question I have for you, Nick, on the LWRP. There's no set, uh, list of milestones or there's no fragment on any, uh, milestones that have to be met?
Dates, you mean?
Yeah, like.
No, because of the state, the state. Well, I asked that, should we proceed with a public hearing? Or do we have to wait for the state in case they make changes so that we're holding a public hearing based on the changed LWRP? And I was like dumbfounded to find out how long the state might take with this. Uh, so.
So there's no timeline is what you're saying?
No, there is no timeline. At some point, it'd have to be a public hearing. Um, somewhere along that same time, there has to be a, a law, a consistency law, which just means that nothing in the village code contradicts the state's policies that are spelled out in the LWRP. The state has like 44 specific policies of the kinds of things that they're looking for in waterfront redevelopment. And, um, um, you know, and they want you to make sure that nothing in your municipality's code conflicts with that. So it sounds like a little tedious paperwork and that's about it. Um, and then the secret, as, uh, Marcus mentioned. But no, no, it's, it's, um, it's kind of in limbo right now because of that long state process. Anything I find out, you know, that, uh, when it would be a good time to take action, I'll let you guys know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. I really appreciate you continuing in this. It, you know, you've been involved from the beginning. So thank you. And at the last meeting, I, um, they had the different areas set up. And I know I had mentioned, which I thought might be a cute thing for the community to do, is have like, um, well, Montrose is known for the rail, the, the, what do they call them? Those little, uh, rail cars and stuff like that. So.
The old, the old trolley.
Yeah, the trolleys. So I remember I had mentioned at the last meeting, wouldn't that be nice in the different areas if, just on weekends, just on weekends, if there could be like a little, like a trolley bus that goes from the different, different points. I think that would be kind of fun on the weekends. Let's see what happens. Yeah.
We live in a great area. Let's take.
Absolutely.
That riverfront stuff, sure. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Nick. Any other comments from the floor? No? Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to go.
We got a handwriting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget about, I forget about that.
Can't forget about Eileen.
No, I can't. What was I thinking? Sorry, Eileen.
That's okay, Teresa. Anthony, I have a question for you. You're mentioning a 25 mile per hour speed limit. Um, Stephanie, Marcus had something to say after you mentioned that, but it was not audible. So I'm wondering what that comment was.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Eileen?
Yeah, wait a minute.
Okay. The legislature has just passed a law, uh, this last legislative session that has allowed villages and cities to reduce their speed limits to 25 miles an hour. Even though the city of Pigs had done it before, apparently the law wasn't challenged. But within all of New York State, you're allowed to create a 25 mile an hour zone.
Well, the entire village or city or whatever.
That is correct.
Okay. And will you be bringing this up at a workshop?
We'll be bringing this up. And I, I think before it gets passed also, there has to be a public hearing to change.
What I'm asking is, are you going to bring it up, talk about it in the workshop?
Yeah. We could discuss it at the next workshop. See what the board's direction is. Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Eileen. So before we go into executive session, I would just like to say to this board, I look forward to working with you, um, as we reinvent our, our little village here. So I think we have a bright future ahead of us.
Thank you.
So on a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and contractual. Did I cover everybody?
No, I also wanted to discuss the prosecutor's.
And the prosecutors. Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Have a great Buchanan day.